Well, let me see. See now. No luck? Did I do something wrong? We're up now? All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, June 26, 2025. It's now 9:01. We're here for the regular session of Hunt, or excuse me, special session, Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Harrison, and, uh... Smith, I jumped right by you. Sorry. I thought, I didn't tell you. How do you say all of them? I'm Judge Stowall presiding over the meeting today. There's no minutes to approve public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Anybody here wish to speak today? Can somebody check online, make sure, during the meeting at least, see if anybody's made any comments? If not, no comments, we'll close the public testimony. No old business, new business. Item B1, physical year 2025, 2026 budget. Commissioners, we heard a lot of information on Tuesday. Wanted to give everybody opportunity, if they want to speak towards it or have any comments about it. And I guess I can kind of lead the way. I thought that was a great meeting Tuesday. I think the comments were good, and I think the needs are there. But as I've said before, we got a tall order this year. Roughly, of course, for the public, you know, it's always hard for us to do the budget because we don't know our rate, what our rate can be, what our revenue can be until like the first week of August, and we got to post a budget by August 15th. So we're really having to pull numbers out of the air trying to guess what the revenue's going to be to help match it with our expenditures. And, you know, it's been... We've had, you know, a good number of years now. But, you know, when I got here in 19, Steve and I were the only two that were here in 19. I mean, a lot of things were broke. We had a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. The big unit on this building, they didn't make any more, and it serves eight sections of this building. And we had to pay, I think, a couple hundred thousand, Steve, to have somebody build it because they did not have them anymore. So we had to have it specially made, and that was cheaper than trying to re-vent a whole building. So we had 18 and a half-year-old cars. Our wages were extremely low. We had a lot of vacancies because we weren't paying enough money, especially in law enforcement and jail area. It was in other departments as well. We didn't have enough janitors. We weren't paying enough money for facilities people. So we've cured a whole lot of that. But, you know, COVID hit us, and inflation hit us severely. Hit us all in our personal life, and as well as up here. We've been trying to overcome all of that. And then, at the same time, we went from 2010, we'll go back to 2010. I think we had 80, 88,000 population. And 20, we had 99,954, 56, one of those, just under 100,000. And the stats tell us today that as of January 1st of '23, we're at 118,500 and something. And we don't have any data yet for what it was January 1st of '24 or what it was January 1st of '25. So we've had two years of growth. It's not in that 118,000. I've seen some data, not any that I believe is the reputable one that we normally get. But we know we're still growing. I saw a projection, we're at 125,000 people now. I don't have anything to back it up, but that's probably a good guess. We were growing a little over, I think, a little over 5% a year those first four years. So with that, growth, you know, growth consumes cash. During those years, we held, because of COVID, we held a no-new-revenue rate and really couldn't even spend our budget because of COVID because everything was so shut down and just wasn't... I mean, we didn't have a trial, I think, for over a year, wasn't it Sandy? It was about a year, I think, before we even were able to have trials. So we weren't spending much money, so our cash balance is built up. And every year after that, we went to no-new-revenue rate. And we've done that the last four or five years. And we've been living off the growth and the deficit budget. And last year, I presented a budget that was balanced, but included a penny and a half or so raise in the previous year's rate. But it was about halfway between no-new-revenue and the voter approval rate. So it was 5, I think it was 5.6% increase in the rate increase. And it got published, you know, everybody's houses were going up 17%, which was a lie, it never was that. A lot of houses didn't go, my house didn't go up at all. 17% was the average price of homes. And if you live in West Hunt County, your house values probably went up. If you lived in the east side of the county, you probably didn't change. If it was, it wasn't very much. So it didn't affect, effective would affect some people harder than it did others. And some people, you know, actually came out pretty good. It didn't have any increase. And then we approved another significant deficit budget. And now we're facing, you know, what do we have? Seven or eight new positions we talked about? People wanted on Tuesday. We're going to hear more tomorrow of other increases and other people needing more money. So we've got to get set on how we're going to look at this year's budget and what our goal is going to be. Are we going, if we're going to have a goal to stay at no-new-revenue, whatever that turns out to be, and take the increase of the final confirmed certified appraisal rolls, my guess so far is about $3.5 million will have an increase over last year's budget. And we heard Tuesday, probably a million dollars of that was eaten up on Tuesday by their request there. We haven't really got too deep into talking about raises. We've handed out sheets for everybody to look at. And if we're going to continue to pay our employees, and we still got some employees probably that we're having well, like the Health Department, we can't hire anybody for the food inspection because we don't pay enough. We're not getting any applications. Same thing we went through with the jail and with deputies. We were paying, in 19, we were paying a jailer $34,000, I believe it was. And we had up to 20 vacancies most of the time, which meant we had to spend a lot of money on overtime and operate a little thin. Sheriff's Department had quite a few openings as well. We couldn't hire any deputies. We've got those salaries up matching what's around us now, and we're staying pretty much full now. I think the sheriff, y'all got one or two openings. I noticed the jail, I think, has got only one on the last report I saw. So that changes pretty often. Those are big departments, 166 people, I think, in between the jail and the sheriff's office. And, you know... And then on top of last year, we had a 2.2 deficit budget to overcome. And we're... We're going to make some tough decisions on how we're going to deal with it. And we're going to continue to grow. I mean, nobody was asking yesterday, or Tuesday, for two more attorneys. He doesn't have room for the ones he's got right now. And I know that, you know, it's hard to say no to the people that are doing some heavy lifting for us, like the sheriff's office and the DA. We want them to keep us all safe. I mean, that's, I guess that's been my mantra lately. I mean, when people ask, you know, what do we get for our tax dollars? And my response is, when you go to bed at night and lay your head down, do you feel safe? And that's kind of what we do. 65% of our budget is law enforcement, courts, law enforcement, incarceration, prosecution, adjudication, and probation. We spend about 65% of our budget on keeping our county as safe as we can keep it. And we're fortunate to have some really good people in the right places, and they're doing a great job. But how much better job could they do if they had those additional employees? That's the challenge. And I'm sure if the sheriff gets five new positions, he's already out of room. He's wanting to have more office space. He needs more office space now, don't you, sheriff? It's, you know, we got a lot of people that are really crowded in their office space, and it's not going to get any better. So, you know, I don't know how we can't, how we can't give raises and how we can't meet some of these requests. But we need to kind of make up our mind what we're thinking. We don't need to go through all these exercises and then come to the end and say, well, we're going to do all of it, and then we get ready to do the budget, and then we don't vote for it. We won't pass it, we won't pass the rate to pay for it. So we need some kind of consensus of what are we going to do this year? If we try to balance the budget, we can't do a whole lot and have a balanced budget, which is what we got to get to. We can't continue to hit a deficit budget. Over time, it'll catch up with us. So that's my thoughts. Anybody wants to jump in, feel free. Anybody given any thought to what our solution could be or might be, or what it needs to be?
I'd like to shoot for a balanced budget if there's any way possible we can get there. I know that's going to be tough, but, you know, we keep depending on growth, and yeah, it's probably here, or it's probably going to keep going. But what if it doesn't keep going? And then we're sitting here, we're not bringing in the revenue, and then we got bills to pay. We're going to be in a bind. I'd rather, me personally, I'd like to try to get that deficit knocked all the way out or as close to knocked out as possible is what I'd like to see. I don't know how we're going to get there, and I know we're going to have to make a lot of tough choices, but that's part of being leadership.
Yep.
Is making those tough choices. It's kind of my two cents on it.
David, I think as a minimum, we ought to at least cut half of it out if we can't cut it all out. Absolutely, we got to cut it in half.
Yeah, I think when you start looking at what your costs are, you identify what, there's always want, needs, and desires, right, in budgets. The goal should always be a balanced budget, and then you have to determine if the needs exceed that, and that's where the tough decisions have to be. Unfortunately, desires are the first thing that usually go out of a budget, and often a lot of wants go out. But you have to know what your needs are. And does that drive you to a balanced budget? Or does it then get serious, and, you know, do you need a bump somewhere to achieve it?
I agree. Of course, it's real hard when you got all elected officials, or mostly elected officials. We can't tell them how to run their department. All we can do is tell them how much money they can spend. And, you know, it's... It makes it real hard to make those cuts because we don't know, I don't know how all of them operate their offices. I'm sure some of them can operate it better. Some of them probably are doing the best job that could be done, and things in between. So it's a challenge.
No, I agree. You know, especially with elected officials. I mean, the people put them in the jobs because they believe they can do the job. They believe they're an expert at the job. They believe they're competent. I don't believe the court should be in the position to tell the sheriff how many people he needs to do his job. You know, we may have to ask the sheriff, hey, if you've got to have X% reduction in your budget, how would you handle it? You know, where would you make your cuts? He would have a much better idea of how to do that than we. And Terry would just pick it on you because you're in the back of the room. But that'd be the same, that'd be the same thing for every commissioner, every department head, is how would you do it? Rather than the court trying to tell everybody how to run their business, here's the money you have to run your business with. And that's just me from my background. You guys can tell me if it fits in the government world or not.
It's a different world. Anybody else?
Judge, I'm in agreement. I'd definitely like to see us attack that deficit and bring it to zero or as close as we can. I'm always someone who wants to look at trying to use a no-new-revenue rate for the tax rate because I believe that helps us protect our taxpayers who are also feeling the same pressures we've been feeling the last number of years. But I think we've done a lot of good work to bring up our paid competitive rates to keep the jail better staffed and bring on enough deputies to keep us safe. I definitely think we need to prioritize and look at the limited resources that are available to us, what we expect to be available to us. We definitely need to prioritize law enforcement in those decisions there. But I agree, it's going to be a tough year, and there are a lot of things we're having to say no to. So those are the two kind of competing priorities I'd like to see us keep in mind as we move forward and see where we can land. And I appreciate yesterday also because it helped us to get good information directly from the people who are having to deal with that. And I know we're going to get some more of that tomorrow. I think this is going to be very valuable and, you know, a little bit...
And I think we got four or five people coming tomorrow.
And a little bit down the road, when we have more of this information, we'll be able to start putting hard numbers up on a screen, literally or figuratively, and adding them up to see what they add up to. And then we'll get a, have to compare them against projected or confirmed revenue and see how many priorities we can meet. We might wind up with $5 million in priorities or things we want to do and $3 million to do it with, and we'll just have to make some tough decisions and winnow that down.
Well, yeah. One other thing that we need to talk about early. Steve, did you have anything on that? You know, we need to figure out how we're going to handle our payroll overall. Some departments, including y'all, are some that have excess funds in your payroll because we have budgeted positions. And sometimes you hire in people cheaper than what the budgeted position was, and then you can give them a bump after 90 days or six months or something, which is a good business practice. But then we've got others that have huge amounts that get created. And we faced it a couple of times this year with highly-paid people that were retiring, and they hire in the cheapest one, cheapest scale we had. And then they want to split all the money up with all their employees, which we turned down. But we got to have some kind of policy on that where that stops, whether we... I know that in years past, it just always went to zero. I mean, there was no excess funds in there, and you weren't allowed, and they weren't allowed to give any increases. And it's... Every time we give increases, everybody else thinks their department and all should. And they probably, some of them, that's justified. But there's not many jobs in this building, or not in this building, but in the whole county staffing that are doing the same types of jobs in all the departments. There's different skill sets all over the place. And skill sets demand higher money most of the time if you've got certain skill sets. But we need to, I don't know if we, Sandy, if we need to change something in our personnel manual or we just fix it, or we fix it in our budget.
So to me, fixing it in the budget is the right place to do it. And so let's make a number. Let's say this year, we're going to say that it's a 3% raise across, you know, as far as wages. What you can do is you can take a percent of that, and we'd have to figure out what that is. Is it 0.5? Is it 1? And you say that, you separate it, make it two colors of money. One set of money is for pay raises based on, you know, the annual, you know, almost a cost of living, I hate to use that term, but it's associated with that. But then the other bucket of money is for the manager of that department. This is the money if you want to give a salary adjustment or a promotion to somebody. That's the bucket of money that's used for that. And so once again, it goes back to, department head has to manage their budgets. And so this is how you take care of the whole, and this is how you take care of the individuals that are carrying the load and outperforming others. Just as a suggestion.
Oh, it's, you know, and it's absolutely where we need to get to, but the problem I've always had is, you know, and I've advocated for it ever since I've been here. I mean, Sandy needs more help. She needs more people. They're overloaded with all their, handling all their health insurance and casualty insurance and then onboarding, or the hiring, assisting in hiring, and people that are retiring and leaving, they have to handle a lot of paperwork. She's got three people. But she can't, she couldn't have four because there's no place, they'd have to sit on the floor in a corner somewhere. There's not any space in there for them. But I think we're doing a disservice to our employees after we hire them. We don't have any formal training set up for them to be able to pull from. And if Sandy had an individual that did nothing but just scheduled training for the skill sets, that we, different skill sets around them so we could improve some of our employees' skill sets. And then, you know, we need somebody that can help when we're hiring and terminating or looking to give raises to someone. We need somebody that's an HR person with the background. So many of our department heads and elected officials have never run a budget like that or had to hire anybody or fire somebody or evaluate them. And lots need some coaching, I guess, is training and our coaching and our assistance. And, but it makes it real hard to do this as you're talking about putting a bucket of money there when we don't have a way to justify somebody asking to put that money out, pull that money out of the bucket. There's some that, you know, a lot of them I trust to be able to do that. But we got some that I don't feel comfortable with that. So how do we solve it today? Do we go back and just say, zero it out, and then us have a bucket of money? And if we want to do, if they can come to the court and justify it, and then out of that bucket of money, we can not have it in their department or have it somewhere else in the budget to where we can pull that money from there for raises as they're justified maybe. But I don't, you know, we keep having this problem. We got most of our salaries up to about par, I think, with what other people pay, other counties pay, what our local market is. I think we're in pretty good shape, but we, everybody needs a pat on the back and a raise every once in a while for working hard. And we, cost of livings don't do that, and that's unfortunate. Anybody else on that?
I would agree. We certainly, with Gary, that this budget process is an appropriate place to tackle that. It's been kind of a problem for us, and it's nobody's, nobody's department, nobody's fault, no department head's fault. But, you know, we need clarity there so that they know because we kind of have in mind, I think, where we want to go, or at least a part of where we want to go. And, but we can't really enforce that on anybody unless we go back and draw up a policy that allows us to do so. And so I think generally, whether it's salary or anything, yeah, starting with kind of a zero base when it comes to budget season, and then funding those positions and expected positions moving forward is the best way to go. And if we need to make changes during the year, we're certainly, I think, all willing to work with department heads to make sure that their needs are met. But right now, kind of the bucket and the bucket of money approach is causing some problems. And of course, you know, department heads are all responsible for their department, but in an organization, sometimes what happens in a department, you know, has ramifications in others as well. So we need to be able to make sure we have some consistency across the board in position types and pay and what's going on across different departments in the county.
Well, and we also, instead of just getting what I call a cover letter for a raise from a department head or elected official, I mean, we're the ones that approves it. I understand they're the ones that suggest it and are willing to give them the raise. But at the end of the day, we're the ones that approve it. And all we get is a cover letter showing we're going from X to Y on the raise. And so, you know, even before we move to the bucket of money, we've got to come up with a better way of documenting on why this person is getting the raise besides the cover letter that we get.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's sorely lacking. It's a stamp that's based on nothing today. And so if the individual who owns the department has to say they've been in this position this long, their last three performance reviews, you know, or whatever it is that we do, I know we don't do all the formality of that, but...
There's very few of those.
Been outstanding, exceeds expectations, you know, whatever it might be. They're getting new workload that's a 25% increase in complexity. You know, those things that says, this is justified, and here's the four or five reasons to Steve's point. I think that goes a long way in saying, hey, this isn't just a pay raise because Joe's been with us for 10 years. One of the hardest things to adjust when you're with people, for me, is the job pays X, and we pay individuals the money. But the job is worth this. And at some point, individuals, you want them to make more, they're good performers. But if the market can satisfy that job at $50,000 a year all day long, and this individual's making 60, to continue to give a raise to the job is not a prudent business decision. So those things help you monitor that. And Sandy, correct me anywhere when I act like I'm an HR person because I'm not.
And so that's you volunteering to take that task on and...
But, you know, I'm really not sure that any of that is the right thing to do.
Gary, I'll second and agree with that. And also agree with Steve's point that we need a better and more clarity on exactly the information we need to be receiving.
But we're going to have to define that.
Right.
I'm all for that, I agree. But we got to define it because, I mean... But the evaluation sheets...
When it comes to us, they know to. I mean, that's the end of it.
That's where it stops.
And that's actually what we would have to document.
But if the money's not in their budget and it's over here, then yes, we have a better chance of saying, no, you can, unless you provide it.
Right. But at the end of the day, it comes to us to approve whether they get the approval or not, whether the money's in the budget or not. So if they're telling you no, that's one thing. When it comes to us, then we can for sure say...
I'll have to have the backing for sure because that way I'll say I can present it and not guarantee it.
Exactly.
Unless you don't give me the documentation that is a true performance review. People who just go through and mark fives on everything, that's not a...
Right.
I mean, I'm not all five, and I'll be all five.
Nobody is.
But we got a lot of them that do. But we got a lot of them that do.
They'll even-
They just mark all fives, and here's your paper, and, you know-
And like Sandy said, it, it's, it's our decision then, or our time to stand up and say, no, this, we're not going to approve something like this. They don't get the raise.
Well, I, all, all those are great ideas, but we need to formalize it somehow and make it a policy. That this is what, if, if you're going to give a performance, if we decide to put it in a bucket, we're going to have to decide what that is, then we have to have some rules about how you can get to that bucket. And we control it.
Yeah, I, I think, to your point, we, we need to, we've got to make decisions for how we're going to do things. Uh, but by the time next fiscal year, so October 1st rolls around, we have to have new policies in place to how we govern it.
I'd kind of like to see it where you give, the raises come through the budget, at budget time and not throughout the year. I mean, I know we've all done it, different departments have done it, but I think it would simplify things if we just, everybody, you, you don't do the performance raises or whatever. You just do the, the cost of living raise for, for everyone. Or if we do come up with some policy, but what we have to get away from is like, like say, you got somebody making $60,000, and you hire somebody back in at 40, and then you've got that $20,000, and you disperse that through everybody. Well, then that costs the county a lot of money, because now we're paying more insurance and everything through every employee. Now, if there's a reason, like you say, like y'all were talking, if we come to court and then someone says, hey, this person has taken on more workload. This person is, went and got another license or yada, yada, and they can justify getting that raise, then that department head bring it to the court and then make a decision. But just, I'd like to see the policy go away that where we're, somebody quits, and we hire somebody in lesser, and then we take that money and disperse that throughout everybody.
And if you separate the budgets to where that it's a promotion budget versus, you know, you know, an annual raise at the time of budget, it will do that, because now that can only come out of this bucket.
Right.
The only, only problem, David, is, uh, if we do it just at the beginning of a year, you know, you got, you got people being here three months, not all year. And that's, that's the-
It'd be part of your, it'd be part of your procedure, there's a cutoff. If they haven't been hired, if they're hired after this date, they're not eligible.
But now they got to wait 15 months to get another raise. I mean, that's, you know where I'm going. I mean, it makes it, it makes it a little difficult. But it's the same, the same thing's happening now with the cost of living raise. We can hire somebody September 1st, and October 1st, we give a cost of living raise, they're getting a raise, and they've been here 30 days, and-
That is an industry practice, though.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like Gary just keeps raising his hand.
He's going to be voluntold here in a minute, huh?
Actually, I think about two courts ago, we kind of got that, so.
Hey, I want a motion on Gary.
I think Sandy and I are going to be good friends.
And Judge, we, we've done across the board raises, and that's been, that's been appropriate in, in a lot of circumstances. But I, I think, you know, we might think in the, in the future about, you know, again, taking that, instead of just applying that, you know, across the board, we might, to Gary's point, uh, think more in terms of, of budgeting for promotions within each department and allowing department heads to distribute those funds, uh, or more of those funds. I'm not saying we, we don't do COLAs across the board, um, but, but we, we lean-
And the process puts a checkpoint into it.
We developed a more, a more clear and robust expectation and process for evaluations and such that we, we lean on them, because they really and truly, we talked about market rate to fill positions. I mean, they, working with the, with HR, should be the ones who best know what it takes to fill, uh, to fill those positions, um, if, if they're vacant, were, were they to be vacant. And so, we can, we can certainly rely on-
You seem to do that on your part when you got time sometime.
We can certainly rely on, on their, on their knowledge to, to help us with that.
Well, you know, all the, all these are great ideas, but it, it takes a bigger step than just changing the policy, because-
There's training.
You, you, well, you got, you got to train all our, our staff on how we want those evaluations to be done, or we got to help them with it. And we, again, that's back to, we need more people. And, uh, that, and where we put them, you know, how are we, how are we going to do that? And-
Sandy, do you have, it sounds like you have some, some policies or, or desires that you've, you've been had in place and requested and-
Well, we, we did up one a long ago. We haven't presented anything to zero out everybody's collective, like if y'all decide to do it, or even call them, or whatever.
Could you, could you step to the mic so we can get your comments on the recording?
Um, we came up with a policy that would zero out each of the, at the end of, um, before the new budget. It would zero out everyone's available funds. There's no extra funds available. Um, certain departments, as you know, have a lot more than others. I have a zero balance on mine, there's nothing there. I can't do a merit raise. There's a lot of departments who cannot do merit raises, unless I have somebody who leaves, which I pray to God they don't, so. Um, but there are a lot of departments who do have people leave. And then, yes, okay, this person's taken over a little bit more responsibility. I can see giving, bumping somebody up. But some of the raises that are given, and the money's just sitting there. It's one department, it's been sitting there for what, two years now? It's just a huge chunk of money that we need to, it could be over here helping other departments.
Do you know what the number overall would be for every, for countywide?
I would have to go in and figure it up. No, I don't have it right in front of me.
There's, most of them, most of them are pretty small.
Over 30,000 just sitting there.
So, it could potentially be a substantial amount of money?
Yes. And there's others that have 2,000, 4,000, 6,000. I mean, there's different ones, but there, and there's a lot of departments who have nothing.
Why don't we look at getting that number, what it would be if we zeroed everything out? And that's more money that goes back in-
Mm-hmm. Right. Or it goes towards there, but then zero them out. You know, if we do, if you do do a COLA raise, or however you want to put that, you know, the percentage, the money goes, use, that money's used to cover their raises, and then anything left goes back into the general fund.
Maybe even start building a retention bucket. So, when somebody's, got somebody threatening to leave, they have a place to go get it. It's not, they're not penalized, the rest of the department, by taking money out to keep them.
Right.
Well, yeah, and particularly, I mean, so many of our departments are small. I mean, you know, one or two people, and-
I'd like to add a comment. Just after our last audit, our CPA was in here, this very issue came up. The way we've been treating it was without a line item. It's called concealment. It is not allowed, when Fund 10's ends, its fiscal year ends, that money must go back into Fund 10 and not be retained within the departments. And I know I've had this discussion with y'all several times now. And if you continue this process, a line item must be created to show that funds. You know, it's, all you're doing is driving up costs, you're building, it's a building block. And it's not the way line item accounting, governmental accounting was designed.
Answer's that question.
Mm-hmm. Well, not only that-
Just to educate me some. So, what, what you just said, if I take it, is that when you have underruns, they go back to general fund, or whatever that item was you were talking about.
It's all in the general fund anyway, but-
All Fund 10 money is a bucket, it's a wallet. And I give you 10, I give somebody else 10. But if you don't spend it at the end of the fiscal year, you give me that change back. You don't keep building on it. It's, it's a dispersment system, and we've not done a good job of-
So, when it goes back into Fund 10, what happens with it in, in the future?
Fund 10 goes back in there, and that's how you build up your budget, I mean, your budget amount to compensate for deficits. It goes back in there. It's, you know, you don't have to spend it just because it's in your budget. And unfortunately, people do believe that if you've got $20, then, let's see if I can squeeze 25, and that's what's causing a major bit of our problem. And I want to go back to one of your additional, additional things about budgets. County government budget is built off of individuals, not off of skill sets. So, when we build this budget, I have 400 different individuals with a rate. I'm, I'm paying people, not positions. And it goes back to yours. If that position is $50,000, why am I paying somebody 70 for it? You're, you're not doing anything to benefit the county. Those people could not leave this environment and find another job at 70 if the skill set is worth 50.
Well, I think, Mary, I, I think what we do, and they still be wrong. I think we budget most of the time for the position, and that it pays that much money. And that's where it's built out of the budget. But, but in doing that, it does create some excess, because we're not paying somebody the full budgeted amount. And so, what you're saying is, we have to pay somebody the full budgeted amount if it's in our budget.
And, but again, I just, I just, I look at the way we're doing budgets. I'm not saying it's wrong, it's just not beneficial to the taxpayers. If you're paying somebody 70 and the going rate out there, now, you can bring somebody in at 40, watch them, train them, groom them, grow them for the capabilities for the next level. But we don't even have a system in place that says, you're level one, you're level two, you're level three. No. When it comes budget time, it's whatever you're making, you give 3%, whether you sit there, did nothing, and somebody, Bobby, Bobby was sitting over there working himself to death, and I'm doing nothing. I got the same merit increase he did. That doesn't encourage people to excel. It doesn't, you know, we could have in-house training. There's stuff online I look at all the time that shows us how to do it. I have an issue. YouTube is out there, it's a great resource for stuff. So, say we need a training department, there's capability that already exists in our electronic world. It's great. But we need leaders who believe in training those people, getting them groomed, getting them promotable. We don't have that currently. And, and to me, department heads, elected officials are guilty for not doing what they need to do to make the assessments of their skills in their departments. You start to train them, you will get more benefits than what we get today, because there's no real incentive to do better.
I agree 100%. Unfortunately, the way we, the way we're told we have to operate, it makes it real difficult to accomplish all that. Because, you know, all it takes to get a, a position up here, in some cases, is get elected. And, and I'm not bashing anybody, I'm just, that's just the way it is. So, you know, when you're, when you're out of L3, and you got trained people and, and, and skill sets that they test and have the ability to test, then that's great. But up here, that's real hard to, to make it work. I wish we could, and I, I, it should be a goal to try to get there. But we can't, we can't get there without help from a HR department that's got some good skill sets and trained and know how to handle these situations, so they can lead us, and-
So, Judge, I, I, you're, you're correct. Uh, I'm by no means promoting that the county operates like L3 here, so I want to make sure that-
I know, I know that.
There's a, but, but you're, you're right, there's a step function, I think, for us to get there. We can't go from 0 to 100. Uh, and so, the question I think that you're saying is, how do we get started?
Yeah.
Is the starting-
Well, in, in, you know, for your edification, you know, I, when I, my first year on doing a budget, I wanted to put that little bucket in everybody, every department, and so, they could give merit raises and all. And I was talking to Daniel Ray about it, and, and he said, well, let me run that by PR, PR attorneys. And the response we got back was, if you do that, you're going to have people that just give it to their best friend, or hire their best friend, and give them that money, and then you're going to get sued. So, the only thing you can do safely in giving raises is a cost of living. Until you change your personnel manual, and you change the way y'all are hiring and firing and managing, only thing you can do is a COLA and be safe. Even though we do, we do give merit, we approve merit raises as we go along. But every time we do, then every other department says, well, wait a minute, they got something. Now, we want something. And, and to Mary's point, we don't have anything to test to say, well, is that true or not true? Do you, are you working at the same level? Do you have the same skill sets as this person we just gave a raise to? And you got, nobody, no central person is evaluating that performance. You just got elected officials or department heads. And we can do something with department heads, but most of our departments are elected officials.
Um, David had asked what the total amount was that is available in different funds.
For all, that's covering all 400 employees?
That's the money that's just sitting there, funds available.
86 what?
$86,784. That is just the salary portion of it. That does not include unemployment, workers' comp, uh, FICA, retirement, all of those. That's not including that. So, you have to tack that on also.
So, that number would be north of 100 or easy?
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
So, because that's funds that's just sitting there, but we have to budget for all the other in case it's ever used.
So, based on this conversation, am I, do we need to just have Sandy go ahead and clear those out in every department, and then give us sheets to work off of? But then we got, we would have to leave open the positions that are currently budgeted. If they're not filled, they have to stay there. Correct?
I, I'd like to add just one more thing to this conversation. And it's based off of the grants that Hunt County is, is getting. So much of what we've talked about in this, this short time is the issues that the people that are from the federal and the state that are making grants to these departments. They want to see the skill sets, they want to see job descriptions, they want to see what, how you get promoted. They want to see all the safeguards of the money that they are funding in here are used appropriately. And we need, you know, there, there's so many policies that we need. But again, it starts with the elected officials, our department heads. If you don't care, you can't make your employees better. There, there going to be a reflection of how you handle that department. If you're not respectful, you don't manage your time, you don't manage it, and you don't even know what your employees are doing, you've done them no favor, and you certainly haven't helped the county, Hunt County's taxpayers.
I, I agree with all that, but it's, uh, you know, of course, you know, when, uh, when state was trying to cut our ability to put any, cut how much we could tax our citizens and trying to control it from Austin, and they, and they do a lot of things trying to take power away from us. I don't understand why, you know, we've been, this was created in, our counties were created in the Constitution and set up the way it is, and it's been going for, however old Texas is, 150 years, whatever, however old we are. Why don't they look at restructuring how counties operate? You know, I've always said that, in so many ways, the city operates a lot better and smoother and easier than we do, because they have a city manager who's a professional. And they, they hire all professional people to be in their departments. And they all answer to the city manager, and you got one person, and that's running it. Now, they have to get their approval from their council for oversight of that. But day in, day out, raises and all, if the money is in there, it's up to the city manager and their professional HR department to do all those things, and-
And none of them are elected.
And none of them are elected. And, you know, and I've heard some complaints that, you know, the city has workshops. Well, most of their workshops aren't public, most of them are with staff. And staff meetings don't have to be public. It's just when you have elected officials in the room. So, what the workshops are, is what the, the city manager presents to the council of their wants and all, and you hear from one person. You don't hear from 26 departments. And in a lot of ways, that's a lot more effective. But in other ways, it's, it's not near as good as the way we do it.
You have people that are removed from this process.
Yes.
You have decisions removed from-
And then you're asking the elected officials to have a couple of meetings and then approve a budget. And they, they're just trusting that all the professionals are doing the right thing. And, you know, we had a comment last year that, you know- And, you know, we had a comment last year that, you know, you know, we should, you know, we should, we should be, have a tighter budget because the people are going to spend it all and they're just going to ask for more next year. And my response was, no, we don't, we don't have that problem. The good thing, if we don't have that problem, because we've got elected officials, and if they start doing that, they probably won't be in office next time. And so we, we got a little bit more controls, I, you know, I've, I've been, that happens a lot in the cities. And I was, had an experience early in my career at the city. I walked in the engineering department, and they had two boxes of the state-of-the-art surveying equipment that I would have given my right arm to own and have. And they sat there for five years and they never opened the boxes. And it was probably $100,000 worth of equipment that I couldn't afford. But they had it in their budget and they had to spend it. And that's, that's not right. So there's not a perfect world in government, I guess is the moral to all this conversation. But we do have to start doing better. We got, we got to get a plan, and we got to, the first thing we got to do is get control of, of our, our staff. We got to get, where we treat them better, pay them fairly, and all the things Mary said, we need to, we got to get to where we can do those things. And again, it's more money, and we got to spend more money. But hopefully, we, it'll save us money in the long run by having a staff that's fairly paid in all the departments. All right. Anything else on just overviews of what we've, what we want to try to do? Anybody got any other ideas or want to discuss anything else?
Judge, I'm sorry, circling back to the last, last discussion. So, so as far as the beginning, we got a, the hardest part about fixing any problem like this is kind of the first step. So do we have a first step for trying to work on these policies to make sure we're, what is, what is our first step there?
Well, that's, I've asked Gary to, I've asked Gary to take that on and with his vast knowledge and experience of, that he's the man for the job, and he's, and he's the new guy on the block.
I'm on board with that. Every, the, the new guy always has to get assigned a couple
It's been so long since I've had to understand what rookie meant, and I'm remembering.
And, and so, okay, yeah, that's great. Judge, have we, I know our insurance costs have gone up quite a bit. Do, do we have a number for what, what that increase has been this year?
It's handed out to you.
And this is next year's rates?
No increase on health.
No increase in health, okay.
The only increase in all of that is dental. Everything else is, the vision, the health insurance and all is staying the same. Dental went up $9.
Okay. Thank you.
And since Mark brought that up, how is the insurance? Is it working out pretty good so far? Complaints, issues?
Complaints have gone way down now that everything's kind of, we've been in it now, what, three years now? So it's, it's made its, all the little hiccups are gone. I mean, occasionally, but nothing like when we first started, no.
Well, I'm confident we made the right decision when we did because my hearing from other counties and all that are on TAC insurance, I think it's going to be like $2,000 now. I mean, it's terrible, I mean, everybody's trying to get off of it, and they're having all kinds of problems at TAC with their insurance. And I, I'm pretty sure that I was told it's, I rounded it 2,000, it's 1,900 and something dollars a month they went up to. And we're, I don't have that sheet, 1,500, is that what? Yeah, 1402. So when we went on it, I think we were at 12.5, 12? 12.75. So we've gone up, that may have two and a quarter or something over three years. And, and they've, they were already at, TAC was 17.5 this year, I think, and they're going to 19 something next year. And so we're, and we're given the same, we got the same coverage, same everything with, with our managed plan, self-funded plan. We're, we've, we've gone to a self-funded insurance policy, or insurance for our employees, and using what we were paying in premiums so the public knows. We, we have stopgap insurance that we pay for. Any one claim that goes over 125,000, we have coverage for that. And if we go over 5 million, I think that's the number, total for the year with all, all the claims, then we have stopgap coverage on that. So we limit our, our risk. We've got, we've got stopgaps in it. And it's been a, we've been doing it, and it's a, it's allowed us to keep our, our costs down on our employees' insurance, the payments we have to make for our employees' insurance. All right. Gary, you want to do your presentation? Your, your own, if you're?
No, I'm happy to do that.
Well, you don't have to.
Well, we have another meeting that
We have plenty more.
We have plenty more. You want to do them all, all them commissioners at once?
Doesn't matter to me.
Whatever y'all It's up to y'all.
Want me to go ahead?
Go ahead, we're here.
All right, let's go.
I might be careful, he's going to set the, set the mark up there pretty high.
Once again, we're back to, I'm happy to do that. Once again, we're back to the rookie conversation. Can we get that in? I was going to put it up on the
He's working on it. That's fine. Wherever you want to be. Do I need to send camera or content or something on the? We've got a new system, so I haven't learned it all yet.
It's new to me, too.
Yeah. Does it send camera or send content?
I'm moving the arrow, but there's not a laser.
There's no laser, okay. Well, we didn't get the fancy
Mark, is, is that on?
Yes, it is.
On the website, on YouTube?
I believe so.
It is, okay. We hit the right button.
All right, good morning, everyone. Happy to be the, the guinea pig on the, on the commissioner's side. These guys certainly can school me with first time out. So the, the intent here is to kind of make this build on itself as, as I go through it. One page gives way to the next page. So just, I'll, I'll try and point out whenever an answer is about to come. If, if, if you So, saw this, David did this, I just put this as, as a cover. This is just to kind of baseline ourselves. From a road report, just a, a quick look in the, in the short time I've been here. When you go look at culverts across the board, we, we've got aging and deterioration. So we're going to be doing a lot of that this next year. We've got two Iron Gate bridges that are going to have to be replaced. You can see the, the roads that they're on there. At the end of the day, what I'm about to present to you is going to have a, it's a $4.9 million budget for, for precinct threes, road activities. It's a, I, I call it a modest $436,000 increase, and at the end of the day, it's because that's 8%. Most all of it, with the one or two exceptions which I'll point out, are really tied to, you know, cost going up, just, you know, tied to that. So didn't get overly aggressive. I will talk about some things that would have made me go overly aggressive, but in, being in the first six months, I felt like I needed a little more time to make sure I understand before I go asking for money for something that I may not actually be able to spend or have the, the plan full for it. Got one, one new road, we've got a covert that's been washed out that has not been replaced, that's going to need to be done. That road's, should still be open, but right now it's blocked and not, not able to pass because the, it's washed out. So we need to get that fixed. As I say, bridges and culverts, got a, a couple of the 20 footers that are going to need to be replaced, to give you kind of idea there what's, what's driving that cost on those. You know, as we go through, you know, I'd love to, I put it on here, the item six, increasing amount of, of traffic, growth of the county, those are all good defaults that we're all doing. But the reality is, most of the things that I'm seeing are just deterioration of things and the need to preserve the things that we have rather than letting them continue to age at the rate they are because there are some opportunities to slow some of that and get a little more time out of what we've, work we've already done. So kind of a, just a, what, what you're about to walk through. So the first thing is just to walk down, I'll be going down through the line items. Like I said, it's an 8% increase. It's really tied to roads and bridges, how we're going to use some equipment. And, and we actually have a couple of things on the safety side that, that we need to go deal with on capital. Capital, you, we, we've already done some auctioning. Hopefully, that's going to benefit us in this budget. I'll show you the item that I think I might be able to pull out if I can get it purchased this year. And, and some facility improvement. We'll talk a lot more about the facility, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions on that. The five-year plan, so this is what I did not put in. So got 150 miles of road, which largely has not been overlaid in, in the proper manner to ensure the long-term preservation of the, of the road. That's why there's so much road work that has to done, so, so much patching that has to be done because we didn't get a good solid overlay code on that. So you start talking about 15 miles a year gets you to 10 years. Everybody's been telling me, we, you, you really need to worry about what's in your elected timeframe. Next year, I plan to come back with a, with a plan that talks about what, what this precinct's going to need, whether I'm sitting in the chair or not. That, that doesn't go away regardless. And so, and that'll, that'll help us in, in trying to prioritize. I believe that 150, as we, as we have all the developments that are going on, I believe those roads start coming off the list as those get taken care of as we develop. I think the roads that are in the best condition but have not been sealed properly need to be done first so that I'm not managing and replacing those in a two-year timeframe as opposed to a seven-year timeframe. And so those are the things that we'll be working on. And then there's some other considerations at the end I just want to put on the table for the Commissioners' Court. Really, it's not about this year's budget, it'll be about future budgets and things that I think, as we talk about where we're at and what we do, starting to improve the way you, your efficiency and how you manage your costs down is, is how we start managing, you know, within these budgets that are going to always be tight. All right. So walk down the, the budget. So, we'll kind of make this simple. So I, I'm sorry, I, I took this just so we calculate. This is the, the document that you sent out, Judge, and I just put it in Excel so that I could actually calculate on my own. So first thing I'm going to do is go down the right side on any, where there's a change, tell you why, and then I'll get to the other items that are colored and just, as we go through it. So we drop all the way down to equipment repair, about a third of the way down. That's a 5% increase. Honestly, we're, we're seeing some repairs that are happening right now, they seem to be greater dollar in nature. Put a little bit in there for, because as we increase usage, which I can tell you has happened in the first half of this year from the historical run, we're, as you increase the use on the equipment, you get more breakdowns. Happy, happy to see that in some cases. So we, we added 5% in there, and of course, costs are going up as well. When you, we get to the next item there, barn maintenance and repair, I will get to that on the next slide and kind of give you a little bit. But, but the bottom line is, that barn has been in need of, we'll just call it refurbishment for some time. It doesn't suit all the needs.
It needs a little love.
It needs a little love, yeah. And so, so you'll see that, so really, 10K was what I left in there for the general maintenance that, that we're running in there now. Actually, it's about 3,000 less than the current budget, but there's, there's 73,000 added in there for the first year of a three-year project, or a three fiscal year project. You drop down the next time, let's see, the liability insurance, we've actually added a couple of vehicles this year, so it's just a, an estimate bump up to cover the insurance for the, for the new vehicles that have been added. Benchmark. Now, I will talk about this in, in, on my last page of considerations, but since it's on there and, and the road, the word shows up because I know it's one that decides a riot every time people hear it. When you, I believe we need to start benchmarking against some other counties. Everything from the way they, they do things, do they have better cost opportunities? We, you've, we talked about unit road system, and that creates emotion for lots of people. The reality is, does it fit us, does it not fit us? Let's, let's make it a fact conversation rather than opinion conversation. And oh, by the way, if it doesn't fit us, what are the things they do that we should steal that are best practices? And I, I believe, I just put a little bit of money in there for some travel associated with doing some benchmarking. Operating supplies, actually, I circled that one in green. We've got three desks. I, I won't give you a strong description. I started to put pictures in here, I decided that wouldn't be fair. We'll just say that the office area in the, in the barn, it needs a little bit of modernization. And so, you know, file cabinets with cut, cutout doors on top of them, we can do better than that. And so, trying to get three desks, but actually, right now, we're working on the budget. I circle it in green because my intent is try and get that done in this year's budget if all possible. That would be something I would pull out of this budget if we get that done this year. The utilities, that's a thousand dollars. When I look back at the prior years, it, it seems to go up about a thousand dollars a year, so I just rolled that in for that. Drop down to road materials, really, that's, that's tied to, that's tied to cost. We're going to have a little bit of increase in, in material that we're, we're putting out. We've, we've had, I believe it's 32 roads that we've been working that were underserved that didn't have adequate material on them. So we, we're, we're increasing that spend to go do that. But most of that's just tied to what's naturally going to happen on prices as they go forward. Bridges and culverts, I gave you reference to that on the first slide. Those are the, the, the main ones that, that are going to drive the cost increase on that because we have some things that are significant costs that have to get replaced. And those are going to become non-negotiable with, with some of the inspections coming up. Then drop down to equipment, the last item circled in green there. We've, and we've got a truck that, that we need to go get. Actually, it's circled in green because I believe that the proceeds we got from the auction are going to largely cover the expense of that if we can get it purchased this year. It would actually, you know, come off this list. But right now, trying to get quotes and trying to get beds and timelines and can we get that pulled off, pulled off, I'm not sure yet, just as we
You've got budgetary authority in your equipment line item?
For this year?
Yeah.
No, it would be out of the auction proceeds. I was under the impression that I could use that.
If it's from the auction, you should have budgetary authority.
Yeah, if he's, if he got the proceeds from the auction, if you
Because that goes into your equipment.
To equipment or where you had it put to, but
That's where it should be going, it's supposed to, yeah.
So it's okay? I didn't know, I didn't remember.
Yeah. You'll have budgetary authority.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then, and then we've, we've got a tractor. Honestly, one of the problems, I think, all of us, between the rain and, and everything that's going on, mowing is, is a nightmare right now. One of my biggest surprises is when I get there and find out we only have one shredder. There's actually another shredder sitting on the maintenance yard, but there's not a tractor to pull it. And so, so we, we, we need to, we need to add a tractor because mowing is a, is a, is a hard, a hard thing to get done with two or three, much less when you get down one. Using the Bowmax to mow is not very efficient at all. Oh, by the way, the quality of the cut is horrific. It looks like I pulled it off by, the top off my hand, you know, frankly, let me go do it.
Maybe it needs new blades.
Yeah, we've done that, too. And we have a loader that, that we need to replace, and frankly, it's, it's a safety issue. We've looked at it, local mechanics have looked at it, OEM has looked at it. When, after you're loading, unloading, on top of trucks, the brakes don't hold and the vehicle will go back and forth. So that, that needs to be replaced. So that's, that's the walk down. Any, any questions on that piece, at least how I got to where I'm at? And of course, at the bottom, that's the, the four, the four, $436,000 increase, which is about 8% across the board. So the barn improvement. So one of the things that we're looking at this is, is it, it just doesn't support the needs anymore. You can't, you can't pull all the equipment in. We need to relocate doors to the other side. But not looking to go spend $230,000, which is what it would take. We've got an old tin building that's been there, I would say somewhere short of 300 years. But it's, it's, it's dark, it's damp, it doesn't support storing things in there. The, the way the facilities are laid out, I can't get equipment out of the weather. I don't have any place to store things in there, and so it, it just no longer meets, meets the general needs. So what I did is I, I looked at, and you'll see the color coding, the yellow to yellow, green to green, blue to blue, spreading this out over time so that it's not a major hit financially. We can, we can do this over fiscal years. The phases are broken down, so we'll re-skin the main building, then we'll tear down phase two. That's actually just at zero cost, that's us doing, doing the labor. Phase three would then, we'd do insulation and add a lean-to to where that old, that old tin barn was, not build a new building, just take the roof line of the, the main building, extend it out over the same space. That way, we get to use the same space, get to use the same concrete, maximize as much as we can. And then, phase four, just be, you know, closing out the, the lean-to and the electrical, you know, skinning that, you know, about three years out, out in the future. The, the biggest thing, you, you can put all the reasons up there you want, you know, doesn't support, improve the workspace efficiency and storage. I hate seeing the, the, the equipment that we buy, the dollars we buy, that's always stored outside. You know, that, that whenever you have bad weather, they don't start because they're You know, that, that whenever you have bad weather, they don't start because they're, they're sitting out in the cold. It's just, it's just not a, a good way to, to manage the assets of, of the county in my, my opinion. I'd, I'd rather buy them every 10 to 15 years rather than every three to five years. So want to, want to improve that. We, we will use county labor as much as possible. We identify the tin, but anything that we can remove out of this and use our labor in, in non-peak times of the year to do that, that'll be the plan. We're, we're going to continue to work this to see what we can remove and do ourselves. And the big thing I, I, I wanted to do, this is just from some past experiences that I've done, but I think it's a great thing for the county unless somebody tells me there's a reason I, I can't do it. When I have projects like this, I, I go to East Texas A&amp;M University. I grabbed the head of the Industrial Engineering Department. Those are the people that are smart about more efficient ways to do things, how to organize things. Just, and this is just a brag moment, I think, for the county. I want to get with them as we go do this because I don't, I don't want to just make it nicer and more presentable on the outside. It needs to be a more efficient, organized way of how we do business. They will work with, with the foreman, with the people that are there, with what the work looks like throughout the year. And they will help organize and, and the efficiency of that for how things are stored and how things are used from everything from commonality to, you know, what's most used, things like that. They actually get a prod, they, they will take their juniors and senior class. People that are majoring in it, that are about to go into the workforce. We can make this a major project for them. We won't be paying, you know, for that. But it'll be a project for them. Their, their head will come. They'll set out what, what they're looking for. We'll tell them what we're looking for. And then we will help provide grades and, and input for the people on that project. It's actually a, a pretty cool thing in the community to do.
Ask them if they can build a jail.
They can't build it, but they could tell you what it should look like. And then, and then of course, the, the phases are going to be very distinctive. Those will be things you open and close so that there's not issues about how you carry over work and things of that nature. And then other considerations. So kind of, you know, we talked a little bit about this as, as we go through. Got to get a way to ensure that we're preserving the roads that we have. You know, I, I do think whenever we, we just focus on patching and, and doing nothing, that everything just perpetuates itself. You spend, you spend all your time working on the bad and the good slowly deteriorate and turn into the future bad. So want to make sure that we're looking at that. I, I do think at a hundred thousand dollars a mile, I mean, if, if I was, if I was greedy and if I was unrealistic, I'd say, you know, look, this is a $15 million effort. You know, but, but over a 10-year period, that's probably not, not way off. Big thing is, is take the things that are in development and, and take those, those will come off the list. Take the ones that are in decent shape, get them preserved so that they last longer. And then go deal with the bad ones as, as we, as we have to. Spanning the use of shared services. I, I know the, the county, you guys did a great job starting this ditching crew thing. I do think it's something we need to revisit. Okay, we've done it for a while now. What works? What doesn't work? Do we, do we need to expand it? Do you need to contract it? Are there different ways that it should operate? I, I think we need to do that. But, but off that, I think a mowing crew, as I, as I was looking at this whole one shredder in, in my world, I was going, why would mowing not be a good candidate for this across the county? You wouldn't have to buy as many tractors as many mowers. You know, across, I'm sure everybody here is always trying to figure out how to, how to go get that. And, and so I, I think there's opportunities there. The, the, the pug mill. You know, the way we mix materials, you take sand and, and rap. You know, we just went, I think it was from $88 to $59 a ton. Because we brought the pug mill onsite, into the maintenance yard. And there, and we're mixing it ourself rather than purchasing it mixed. Now, you guys have more experience in this and so we, you know, you can, we can have that conversation at a time. Because it, like I say, it's just an, another consideration. Might not be the right one. But I, but I do think there's opportunity there because we saved a hundred thousand dollars on 5,000 tons. So each one of us does at least 5,000 tons, if not more, in a year. So does that make sense for the county? You know, to, to have a unit that does that? You know, I think that's a future. Not, not too distant future, but a future conversation. That and other things. I think it's time, so I go back to that benchmarking with some other places. Where's, where's the opportunity at to, to reduce our operating cost? And then the, and then the, the last one is, is, you know, we talked about best practices. We talked about, you know, you know, understanding what a unit road system really is. Subdivision guidelines. This is the new guy talking, so anybody, you know, you can, you can say, you know, nice. These are just suggestions for things that we could go do to look at how we do our operating costs. I see lots of interpretations on subdivision rules. I see lots of people that say they're overscoped. You know, and so I, I think it's a, a good opportunity to look at that. One, for the community, one for development. But two, is there anything in there we're doing this driving cost on our own? And then, new roads versus maintenance. I, I, this is one, the first time I heard it. I, I wasn't 100% sure what I thought about it. But with the amount of developments, this is just because of something I just experienced. I actually just added this. That I just recently experienced as we're developing the new roads, costs that we're getting on the counting that aren't part of the basic estimating process. And so really, how do we, how do we look at new roads, new developments? To make sure, one, that we're not getting cost there. And is new road development the business that, that we really want to be in? You know, because we don't have all the equipment, everything to do that. I just think it's a conversation that we need to have.
Are you saying that we should be doing the roads instead of them doing the roads?
I'm actually contemplating, should we be doing new roads at all?
Construction of upgraded road surface types, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've been trying to look at that and that's why I put it on here as considerations. I'm not educated enough to, to have the conversation on this just yet. But, and, and I know that to have somebody else bear the burden of that would stop development in the, in the county, but I just think that's things that we, we need to look at because there's, I, 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 I experienced something just yesterday. I'm going to lose over $5,000 on, on a road. Because the way we bid it versus where the state right-of-ways were. But we bid it per the distance of the county and it was all done correctly. So I just think we need to have a little more thought into that because if, if that happens across very many roads. Now probably, I'd say all the senior guys probably don't have that same mistake as me, but, but I didn't actually start it, so. Alright, and then I think we've already hit that one. I already talked about that. So I talked a lot. Any, any, any questions? Any thoughts? You ready to sign up and, and give me double what I asked for? But anyway.
Have you, I know you said you went up and down last year. Your current year budget is underfunded with new dollars, so your fund balance was being pulled down for, I think 400,000. I looked at it a second ago. So you, you said you're kind of still wanting to go up maybe a little. You're adding for 450,000, I think you said to the budget. So.
I was wanting to go up that much and trying to preserve that fund balance at this moment for.
So we don't know, of course, we don't know what the tax rate is, so we don't know. But you're, you're already, you're already in a negative is what I was just pointing out to you. You're, you're already in a deficit, but, you know, you have, you gotta spend your fund balance to spend your budget.
I should be getting a lot of money back because all this escrow is going to start cashing out.
Right.
Because we bought 5,000 tons of materials.
That's great. I'm just letting you, just making sure you understand.
I'm hoping it's just a timing on, on starting to get money, but that's the reason the guys are pushing right now to get as much laid as they can so you can start cashing out escrow.
Gary's, oh, I'm sorry, Judge, I thought you.
I was just going to say, you're a new kid on the block, so I was just trying to make sure.
No, it's fair. And, and I need to make sure I understand.
Gary, something I, I was hoping to bring to the court in the near future, and this is a good prompt for that. Is, it, one of the challenges I face in my precinct with roads, and I suspect y'all have across, is just the, the right-of-way conditions and the width of the roads, the width of the right-of-way that we have available to us without, you know, completely bulldozing down massive numbers of tree lines, moving fences, that sort of thing. Is that something you, you're, you've got in your own precinct that you're, you're thinking ahead about how you want to handle that?
Absolutely. So I, I can't say I'm thinking about how I want to handle it yet. I'm recognizing how big of a problem it is. The, the, the roads are too narrow. And you're absolutely right. And, and the problem is, is the, the community love their trees. I love our trees.
I love our trees, yeah.
And, and, and it's going to be difficult to, to take one side of a road and say, we need to clear the fence, clear the trees, everything out. So the, the biggest problem is, is so few of them have already expanded to the point because we just layer old sand on top of old sand. And, and, and over time, you, you shrink about four inches, you know, each side every time you do that. And, and it goes in, but it's also creating the, the hangoff, the, the cliff on, on, on the edge of these roads. And because we don't have enough right-of-way, those, those cliffs are right at the ditches. And so you can't even just go move a ditch a little bit because everything is so tight. So yeah, I don't, I don't have a solution in mind yet, but I agree with you. It's a, it's a significant problem and I bet everybody has the same one.
Perfect. Thank you.
I, I have a nice two-lane road that I go down to feed my horses on and the Johnson grass is so tall because the current Commissioner hadn't got it mowed. That, that the Johnson grass, when it rains, you know, falls in, makes it one lane. So yeah, the, the, the width of the roads I think is, is one of our larger problems.
In, in your precinct, you know, in mine, we, we try and mow all these roads two to three times a year is really what it works out. Traffic levels have some, something to say about that. Is, is that kind of, is that a similar target in your, your precinct as well?
So my, my goal is to have a minimum two. Certain areas would like to get to three. But just to be completely honest, when I get there and find out I have one tractor to pull a shredder, two will be a massive challenge to get to this year.
I'd be catching with one at this time, at this moment.
Everything down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that and in the rain. And on, on the road widths and all, just, you know, of course, when we, when we do plats, we require them to give us our, the additional right-of-way we need. All, all we have now is a prescriptive right of use. We don't have right-of-way. We get, in most cases, we just got a prescriptive right. So we just have an easement. So when we ask them to, a development comes in, we ask them to move their fences back and give us 30 foot from the center. So it allows y'all to move the ditches over and all. Plus, we, we, we do allow a tree or two to stay if it's real close to the right-of-way line. But the, the risk is insurance risk. If we don't get the trees out of there and now we, and now it is our right-of-way, trees are a hazard in a right-of-way. And if we have somebody hit a tree, then we got a, we got a claim problem. So we, it's got to make, you know, it's, unlike all of us, we all love the trees. I think tree-lined roads beautiful, it's great and all. But reality is, we can't, we can't let them be in our right-of-way.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and the point is, when, at, at what point do you say on this road, what side, pick a side, has to go and how many homeowners you're going to have to deal with that? And, and it's a lot of roads that, that are, that would be in that position.
Most of them. Most of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of them are in that, in that situation.
Yeah.
Anybody got any other?
Gary, you did a good job.
I'm shocked you did a good job.
Like everything, it's going to be hard to come up with the money, but it, nothing out of line, I don't think.
Well, thank you.
And on the mowing and the ditch crew, I think we do need to have a conversation about that as a, as a court. I think we need to make some adjustments and look at those things.
Fair enough.
I mean, we could, I think it's going to change, affect the budget for next year. We could probably talk about it. Start a conversation today if y'all wanted to. Because it, because what we're going to do, if y'all are talking about making changes, it could, it'd change the way the budget works, so. If y'all want that conversation, that's fine. Or not, you won't put it off until next week and give everybody time to think about it. We just remind us to keep it in the budget or keep it, but put it as an action item to do.
Well, yeah, and, and maybe give it some thought and, and because you're right, it does have a chain effect. And, and you mentioned a couple of other things as well with the subdivision regulations, so it sounds like we might, we might need to have a couple a day or so to, to workshop some of these questions and, and so.
Well, y'all should have been sitting in a meeting David and I were sitting in yesterday, so. We, we're way too low on our, our requirements. He, oh yeah, he's got three subdivisions that are concrete streets and they're already busting up and we, Freezing Nichols was here. We hired Freezing Nichols to come evaluate, correct, and do all the things. And it's a million-dollar problem.
We're staring a million in the ass.
To fix something?
To fix it.
Yeah. So it's, it's.
Is that in this budget?
It's coming out of yours?
No, it's coming out of his. That's what I just heard.
I'm, I'm used to getting cut.
Oh, the problem with it is, is, you know, really it's, these go back five, six, seven years. And so, you know, it's a, it's a tough deal. Yeah, or longer. Yeah.
So my recommendation would be that we, we don't have to pick a date now, but we probably need to pick a date in the near future to, to sit down and workshop on some of these things.
Probably need to do it a week after next week.
Yeah, need to probably fastly so you can have a feeling where, where it's going.
Yeah, sooner, sooner is better.
Yeah, or y'all, I'm going to be out of town next week, but y'all could have, I don't, I don't have a lot to say about it on how y'all do that. So if y'all want to meet next week, we just need to get it posted, so.
I'm game. Everybody good? Next week?
It's a short week.
Short week. I've got, I know I've got to be in Dallas twice next week for two documents, so we can look at dates.
I know I'm out Tuesday.
Some, maybe we, we, after we.
Wait, wait after, after the July 4th, we'll, we'll have more budget hearings that week, probably too.
We can ask Brittany to, to kind of spearhead getting that scheduled and checking all of our availability.
And I'll attend if you want me to, but that really, that's y'all's deal. It's not mine. So I don't, I don't, y'all, y'all get to decide what y'all are going to do.
Well, I'm going to push real hard for green tractors. I don't like these red tractors. That's my, no.
I, I actually have a constituent that's pretty hard over on that. He, 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 never mind. Like you said, yesterday, we're on TV.
Yeah.
Anything else, guys? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Alright, uh, anybody got anything else they want to bring up today or think we need to talk about for, you know, we're still in the beginning stages of, of creating a budget, but we still have, we, we got to come up with the target of what we're going to do. And so we can't, so we can try to hit it. Right now, we don't.
Judge, we looked at these, we've got the sheet with the, with the, the labor costs. As far as benefits portion of this do, I just want to make sure we, we have the, the dollar amounts. Exact dollar amounts. I know we estimated it'd be something between something north of 15%, I think it might actually be closer to. Rather than guessing, Mary, I, I know you have, don't look to some of that.
You can pretty much just go up, if, if we give a 3% raise, the benefit, those costs are going to go up about 3% too. Is that right? I think that's about right. Yeah. Because they're all a percent. I mean, retirement's 10, it's going to be 10.14, I think, next year.
10.11.
11, yeah. Yeah, okay. And then yeah, 1.1 or something. It's real low. Yeah. Insurance is just the same, so it, it didn't change.
Yeah, it's, it's not going up properly anymore. The only thing that's going up is still 9.
You got retirement and you got withholding, a seven and a half withhold, uh, withholding. That's really about 15%.
So on 3% to 655,000, that's, you add another 20% to that?
Well, that's, we're, we're going to go over that more. I mean.
If y'all kind of give me an idea, I can go and have that spreadsheet done just like that, but otherwise I'm doing four or five different spreadsheets.
So what, what, is this the one, is this the one you just did for me?
No, that's this one.
The original one?
But no, I'm talking about the one where it breaks everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that.
Yeah, that, that'd be good. I just want to make sure the dollar amount we look at is the full dollar amount.
What percentage? Because I'm going to be making, I would have to make a different sheet per percentage. Is that what you want me to do?
Well, I was just, the main thing I was asking is, you know, on 3% raise, it's 655,000. Do we need to add just for safety, 20% to that? So that's going to be another $120,000 roughly.
I don't think so, but I mean, I don't know exactly.
It's kind of ballpark. But the ones you got there, the last sheet, and I think I've already said it, I missed, I misspoke on that because it's, of course, y'all's departments are in there, which y'all are in a separate fund balances, and that says Fund 10. I did get clarity from that, but we, we, she's redone it, redoing it, redone it. I hadn't looked at it yet, but it's got it broken out. And some of those salaries are taken out. Are not taken out, that are really being paid for by some grant money. So they're not. You gave them that one. Okay. So we, we took out the grant money one. And then the juvenile sheet, you took it out of that total number on the last sheet? Okay. Because it was, the, the juvenile probation, we pay, we, we have in our budget under public, I think, I didn't have it marked, under our public services, our, our general government, it's, we've got $650,000 budgeted for juvenile. for juvenile probation. And their salaries are about 650,000, but that's a matching number to a state grant. So, we're not ever gonna spend more than 650,000. And if we have, if there's raises in there, the state's paying. That'll be coming out of state money. Well, our, we had a meeting with our juvenile board, and Aubrey's come up with the idea, a way to do that differently, a little bit differently, make their job easier and clearer on what side, how they match up to match the grants. So, it really doesn't matter because I think most, the state's been paying most of the salaries, or that's where that grant money's going to. So, we don't really need to, I don't think we need to even add into it because we already got 650 in our budget. So, don't try to add that back in when you're looking at, just forget about juvenile probation.
Thank you.
And one main reason I was asking, because that's adding, you know, I know we gotta look at raises or make decisions on that, but that's one of these tough decisions that we gotta make, but that's 655,000 that we're adding to the budget. And that's why I was making sure that was a real number.
We heard Tuesday it was gonna be close to a million if we approved all of those new positions.
Yeah. So, that's why I was asking.
So, some of those decisions, you know, we can't put them off until the end of July. We don't like to do it right.
I mean, that's one of the big driving numbers.
It's one of the big, big numbers, yeah. It is.
Gary, have y'all, at your previous employer, have y'all recently talked about raises or kind of what's industry standard right now?
So, and of course, ours ties to defense and all those things, but it also ties to the market. And so, our, we use global indices. We use, you know, the Fed, Fed numbers, which are, you know, in the, you know, 2.1 to 2.3, you know, inflationary numbers right now. That's why everybody's complaining about interest rates. But, and so, we ended up at 2.5 this last year, which is, you know, it's not a big number, but it's a, that was, that was what our industry was looking at. And I think the highest I heard in our industry outside of Altria Harris was three. I think Lockheed was at three. So, that's kind of where things have been hitting. A lot of it's just tied to terrorists, tied to, you know, uncertainty and, but certainly people are trying to, companies are wanting to start to level out their salaries. To your point, Judge, you know, we, everybody's been bumping salaries and increasing them. That's why we've had to catch up. And so, now companies are needing to flatten that out a little bit. You're seeing a little bit of a trend towards that based on uncertainties and indices.
And, you know, another, another hurt to this year's budget is, in our current budget, we had a million four in ARPA interest money that we got, that we, we pulled it out right at the end of the year, calendar year. And because that's when that grant was really ending, but, so we made sure we got it out before it ended. I think we're still gonna be able to draw the interest on what money's still in there. And we had, we had $900,000 interest earned on our money in the managed accounts. And of course, the only thing we can put our money in are security, I mean, safe security bonds or municipal bonds, CDs, those kind of money is all controlled. If you listen to the news much and business channel, of course, federal government's pushing real hard trying to get interest rates lowered, which will drive down interest rates, which will drive down our earned interest this next year. So, we're budgeting in, in last, current year, we had 2.3 million in just in interest. It's not gonna be near that next year because the ARPA won't be there. I mean, we may have a little bit, but before this budget year's over, the interest rate may already be dropped some. And not, we may not earn the money there. So, we're going to be a little more careful on what we budget for that earnings.
So, Judge, just curiosity, and this is back to the new guy thing, the 1.4 million that you get on that, is that money able to be applied to the deficit that we have?
Yeah, it just goes in our fund balance.
Okay, so it helps reduce our problem for this year?
Well, it helped this year. I mean, with that in there, we still had the deficit. So, it'd have been more if we hadn't had that.
Oh, so that's already accounted against?
That's counted in this year's budget. Yeah, and we've already put that money in the bank.
And Judge, we had briefly discussed in some prior meetings that we needed to come back again and discuss, so I guess that's now. I think we've been using 100% collection rate to calculate tax revenue and, you know, in some years past, that's been close enough and that it wasn't a huge deal because a lot of people weren't spending their full budget and so they kind of offset. And that may still be the case, but I know that there, for last year's budget, I think it was 1.4, was the number, the total number of taxes, you know, we projected to collect, we did not ultimately collect, at least in that budget year. I'm sure a lot of them are going to litigation.
Well, we had several years there in a row that we collected about 99%. And then, and then we also have money in our budget for prior year delinquent taxes, which we always get some money out of. I'm looking at the budget. Now, we budgeted 500 this year. I don't, I haven't looked to see where we're at yet. And we did budget 100%. I'm not, I was already gonna, you may be referring to, I may have already commented on it. I think we're gonna drop it back to 97% this year.
I think that'd be great, yeah.
They used to do like 95 or something, but we always, well, you know, I've already told you, we, when we get to end of this month's totals, that'll be the end of nine months. At the end of six months, our collections were down at that point. I think we were only like at 91% of ad valorem taxes created or collected. But, you know, there's a huge penalty July 1st, so a lot of people put off till June to pay their taxes. So, usually, June brings in quite a bit of tax revenue. So, I anticipate that revenue's gonna go up after we close this month out. And I mean, I've been watching it real close to make sure we don't, we're not under revenue, that our revenues are gonna be there. And in nine months, I'm really anxious to see how, where we're sitting with all these line items. Any others? All right. Any comments from the public? Come on up, Tom. Give us your name and address, sir, even though we know who you are. We need it for the record.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville. Judge, I appreciate opportunity to speak at the end. I know you have policies and procedures, public testimony is usually at the front, but that puts the public at a little bit of a disadvantage because how, we don't know what to comment when we haven't heard, you know, what was said. So, I appreciate allowing us at the end like this. Like I said, I live in the city. Honestly, I don't know a whole lot about county budgeting, county business, what, you know. And so, my comments are more in general than just, you know, specific stuff. I hope during this process, and I know this is, you're working on a budget for one year. It's a one-year next year's budget. But I hope that you'll take time to at least discuss long-term capital plans. I know Commissioner Smith talked a little bit about his precinct and with capital improvement, but I hate the word transparency. I hate the word transparency. It's overused, way overused. But the public demands information. And so, and the problem is, we always, we demand it at the last second when it's almost too late for the information to do any good. But, but we always like to know what's the plan. So, I'm just hoping that some, at some point during all your budget meetings, you'll talk a little bit about your five-year, 10-year capital improvement because that affects our taxes in the future and that kind of thing. You know, you've got a lot of properties that you bought, you know, the Putten Hill area. And throughout the year, you have little discussions about, "What are we gonna do?" I just, I hope you could give the public some sense of, here's what we're planning for big expenditures, you know, buildings and expansion and how we're gonna use that property and this kind of stuff. Just so, you know, when bond times come, that's when people demand the information, you know, and they want it. And, you know, are we gonna do a bond today? Are we gonna do a bond five years? What's it gonna be? What's covered in the current bond? What's gonna be covered in the bond five years from now? You know, just kind of, just stuff like that, just not details. I know it's impossible to know, you know, what our five-year plan is because it'll change every year. But I think it'd be good if the public could just hear some sort of plans for big expenditures, even though you're just dealing with a one-year budget. I do want to say one last thing before I run out of my time, but this weekend, they're predicting the first 100-year, 100-degree day, first day this year, sometime this weekend, I think it's only hit 100. I hope during your budgeting, you don't short-sheet the fire departments. You know, I live, like I said, I live in the city. I've got my own fire department. I'm took care of. I don't, you know, but I hate seeing stuff burn up. And for the countywide stuff, that pretty much, I think, probably falls on you guys, volunteer departments and whatnot, and they depend on y'all a lot. So, I hope, I hope you'll, you know, things are only hotter. They're only gonna get worse. Things are gonna dry up. Things are gonna burn up. So, I hope you take a good, hard look at the, at the fire department when you get to that part.
Our allotment to each of them, we gave a pretty good increase just last year.
Yeah, that's good. Well, like I said, it's only, things are only gonna get worse in the future for, this is my opinion. But, I mean, you can just look at how hot things are, and every summer, it just gets hotter and hotter. So, I just wanted to mention that about, like I said, I live in the city. I'm taken care of. But county people, they depend on y'all for that kind of protection.
I'll address the capital improvement a little bit. Our, you know, of course, our, we started out with the goal of trying to buy and build a new jail. And when the bond failed, it became insurmountable because nobody's passing bonds right now. So, the sheriff's done a great job of keeping it maintained. Our facility is expensive, but we're keeping it where we're still certified. We haven't been written up by the state. Matter of fact, the state has really given us a nice blessing the last few times they've been here. But we are, it's in the budget. We're supposed to be, this year, we gotta put, we had engineers come in and do an inspection. And we've got to put up some, we got, I forgot the size. It's like a 12-foot long, about five-foot, about 10-foot deep hole full of concrete, and then put a pipe up against the east wall of the jail to hold, to make sure it doesn't continue to move out. And we're going to have to put six of those in, I think. So, that's in the budget, trying to keep us in that building as long as we can stay. And of course, as Sheriff said at the meeting on Tuesday, it's, we're staying pretty full now. And we're gonna run out of space pretty quick if we don't get, we gotta, we're gonna do something pretty quick on it. I just don't know how that's, if we can, because 60 million bond didn't pass, it's probably a million, 150 million now to build it. And so, it's gonna be a major deal. We bought the land out there because we, our committee told us, we had, we appointed a committee of citizens to help us decide what to do with it, restart the jail, go do what we're gonna do. And next week, you didn't pass your bond because a lot of people didn't know where it was gonna be. So, we went and bought, found the Putten Hill land, and we didn't think anybody'd be offended by it. It's behind Glen Oaks. It's next to the sewer treatment plant. Nobody goes, there's not a road goes in front of it, really. It's through traffic. There's, it's just a good spot for it. And when we were there, then we ended up buying the Putten Hill building. And we've already had it engineered, designed, it's ready to go to bid. And we've allocated 5.3 million, I think it is, of ARPA funding to that. And we spent some ARPA funding buying that and doing some of the engineering and architects' fees out of it. And we've got the cash to pay for it. Building cost's supposed to be about 13, estimated by the architects, 13.3 million. 5.3 of that's gonna be from ARPA funding. It's federal dollars, basically grant money. And then, our costs are gonna be about 8 million of it. And we've got, we, our fund balance and our capital improvement account right now is around 11 million. So, we're, we're gonna have to make a decision pretty quick because we gotta spend that ARPA money by the end of calendar year '26. So, we gotta get that done or lose that money. So, we're gonna have to make that decision here pretty fast, too.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking specifically of the jail. I mean, I was talking about, but also, I mean, I don't come to every meeting or watch every meeting, but through the years, I seek bits and pieces. And you talk about, you know, the courthouse and running out of room. You talked about last, yes, Tuesday, you were talking about need more offices for DAs and all this kind of stuff. And I was talking about that as well, not just the jail, but, you know, you got a lot of capital stuff coming, coming up for expansion, more, you know, more offices and things.
Right. Well, that's what, you know, Putten Hill's gonna have 24,000, I think, 24,000 feet in it. And that's gonna move people out of the courthouse and move people out of this building to free up more space for other departments that are being, you know, a little cramped, I'd say. And the big one moving out to the interstates, the county clerk. The theory on all that was, is we're taking our community development, 911, and environmental health out to the Putten Hill building. Environmental health's in this building. Community development, 911's in the courthouse. So, if you want to build a house right now in Greenville or in Hunt County, you gotta go to community development, get a 911 address, talk to them about whether you gotta do planting or meet any of our requirements. And then you gotta come over here and you gotta get your septic permit and all done. Then you gotta take that back over there and file it at the clerk's office. So, we're gonna have it all in one spot. And that way, they don't have to, because everybody, county clerk, she has the most traffic in the courthouse. And they all complain because there's no parking and they gotta go through security to get there. And so, hopefully, that'll make the public happy that we're out there on the interstate, easier to get to. Won't have all the problems with parking and other things. So, that's one of our real need. And there's a push, you know, we're not, we're not far away from having to have another courtroom. And the district judges have told us that if, if they had another courtroom, then they could get a visiting judge in when they're in trial, so that they don't get behind on their dockets. So, they can keep, keep cases rolling. Andy Bench, this last year, he had three different trials in six straight weeks. He had no docket. His first docket day was 96 docket calls. And if he'd had somebody to hand that off to, it would have, so those cases just sit there for six weeks because there was no, no activity could take, take place on those dockets. So, it's, and so, the county clerk's only spot in the courthouse is gonna be big enough to have an auxiliary-type courtroom.
Right. Well, maybe, it sounds like maybe you already have told the public all of what I'm asking. I'm just not hearing it. But I think the more the public can hear about the plans, the better it is.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Of course, we gotta be listening, and maybe I haven't been.
It's some of both of that. Thank you, John. All right. Anything else? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So, mo?
Second?
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all, everyone.